Thank you all for coming out on this breezy Monday evening. At least it's raining today and not snowing yet. A couple of things I wanted to mention before we get started. First of all, I would like to congratulate all those board members who have been re-elected. We will be losing Dave Barber. December will be Dave's last meeting, so we hope that he will be in attendance, Dave. Would also like to welcome our newest member who's not here tonight, who will be starting in January, and that is Megan Soller. She will be taking over Dave Barber's. A few things, again, I just wanted to mention. In reading through some of the administrators' reports, I wanted to bring up a couple of points. Wanted to recognize from WestBath, Ms. Jordans and Ethan Reno for the efforts that they put in, their leadership behind the WestBath Redefeat Campaign. Raised a significant amount of money, and it was an effort that was spearheaded by those two individuals, and just wanted to recognize them for that. Something else I wanted to mention, we are going to get a staff report. We're going to get an update on our FLOW program. And I just wanted to recognize the amount of field work that is going on throughout the district. Again, in a couple of the staff letters that we got, there was mentions, and I'm going to touch on a couple, and I probably won't touch on all of them. But Woolwich Central School has been doing some field work on clamming. I know that tonight, and I'm disappointed that I'm going to miss it because it affects the industry that I work with. BMS has been doing some research on the invasive species, the green crabs, and they're doing a presentation tonight at that city hall. So unfortunately, I'm going to miss that. I think, again, we talked about this at the beginning of the FLOW program, and Lawrence had presented. We live in such a unique part of the country. I think it's really valuable that we take advantage of those resources and the environment that we live in. I think it's a great forum to use as a learning experience, and it's just another way to compete with all the electronics and other media that surround us, just another way to deliver education in the district. So I'd like to commend, you know, all of those schools that are doing work in the field. There's a lot of effort involved with that, a lot of planning, and I really appreciate that. Couple other things quickly. Hope everybody had successful parent-teacher conferences. Sounds like we've got some good models in place for parent and teacher and student interaction. Hope we continue to build on that. Wanted to congratulate the folks at Morse for another successful Mojiba presentation. I was there for Friday night's presentation. It was just incredible. And I would like to tie this in a little bit to Thanksgiving at a time when we should be, you know, thinking about things that we're really thankful for. One of the things that touched me the most when I went to Mojiba was the fact that you had such a diverse group of students participating in the program. Students of a variety of different abilities, all giving it their best. And the thing that was most touching to me was the fact that we just had such great support, both from our community and from the student community. The amount of support that some of those, well, I should say, all of those students had up on stage, to really go up there and put themselves out there. It was just incredible to see the support that they got from their peers. And we should really feel fortunate that we live in the community that we do, that we have that kind of support, because it doesn't exist everywhere. So again, want to thank Morse for that presentation, and just really thankful that, you know, that we live in that kind of supportive community. So with that said, we will move on to item 4.0. Approve and amend minutes of October 27th. Well, we have two sets of minutes, so we'll start with the 27th. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Dave. Take a moment to look those over. Any further discussion on those, any changes? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as written from October 27th, raise your hand. Okay, that passes. Okay, we'll move on to the minutes of November 7th. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Okay, Jennifer, motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Alan. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from November 7th, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Adjustments to the agenda. Any adjustments?
Just some policies, I think, that they might prefer.
Is there some additional policies for first reading? Okay, item 6.0, public session. If there are anyone from the public who would like to speak?
Sir? My name's making a lantern.
Do we have a microphone for... Not tonight, okay, sorry, go ahead.
I'm here, I'll be at with my two children, and my three children, and my two children, the ones that are most affected by this right now. I'm dealing with the effects of social media and the negative implications and impacts having on my children's education through the continued use through their iPads from school and at school, and how that leads into home life and how that leads into the way that things are there and it's working out. My youngest daughter Caitlin, she just got done with her first quarter. Started the year out with straight A's, joined a cheerleading team, and was asked to get a Facebook communication, continue communication with the coach and with the teammates. And in doing so, proceeded immediately to get failed in the classes, ending the quarter with four X's. And this is totally out of character for her. I have some information that I've gleaned from a couple of articles. One from the Huffington Post, and the other one's from CBS. And I'm trying to read only a few things that I've referenced here, or have taken back. "In moderation, social media can be a great way to connect with the teens and connect to others in relationships with peers and express themselves. However, excessive internet use can be a serious negative consequence. They found that seven to seventeen, they just fall to seventeen, spend time on social media sites that's equivalent to amounts to seventeen million teenage users. Those who interact with social media on a daily basis are five times likely to use tobacco, three times likely to use alcohol, and twice as likely to use marijuana. Four percent of these teens today admitted to having seen pictures under the influence and four times likely to use marijuana than those who have been scrolling through these images. The data makes sense, those associated pictures of drugs and alcohol will require seeking experience with themselves. Another thing that was a product was no matter what genetics team makes us, they're impressionable, and adding social media, adding social media to their already prevailing fear of pressure, boy, we're answer the pressures for them." Another one I highlighted was, "In terms of whether social media addiction exists, she explains that researchers have found some behavioral similarities between excessive internet use and substance use inducing tolerance, withdrawal, successful attempts to cut back, and impairment of function." University of Michigan investigated this issue by doing a study. They observed the relationship between use and well-being. The more people who use Facebook, they felt, the more their satisfaction levels declined over time. And Facebook, if Facebook makes us feel worse, why can't we stop ourselves from going back to more? Our desires to disclose personal information about ourselves and others is ingrained in human condition. It is not just the production of products on social media. It is so ingrained in fact that people who would actually forego money to talk about themselves instead of discussing other people or answering facts or questions. I could go on and on about what's going on with this, but... I just don't quite understand, I mean, they are really analogies, you know, using analogies very consistent with use of drugs when it comes to Facebook. We spend so much time in our communities preventing our kids from using drugs and alcohol, but yet we hand it back in the box to our kids every time they walk into the school. And I really truly feel that. I've actually experienced it with my own children, trying to remove social media, trying to remove these devices from their possession, instead of doing their homework, and have been, you know, been accosted almost like I am taking away something that really truly they need to live. I know it's really become an important thing for everybody. It seems like these days, I always think, I have a seventeen and a fourteen-year-old that don't have cell phones or smartphones. I don't have a smartphone myself. I do what I can or what I need to do on my own time when I have free time. This has become such a problem for my kids that they can't even do their homework without something pulled up in the background so that they can get the posts. And every time that sound goes off, it's just like another kid, and it really truly is. And I have already addressed the IT situation at Morse High School. Cannot remember the gentleman's name right offhand, who was in charge of that, but I had my iPad removed, or my daughter's iPad moved from her possession after school hours. And I also had them install software to prevent Facebook on their iPad. And this is stuff that I guess you guys are going for system-wide, and I really truly hope you guys achieve that. Because I truly don't believe it belongs in our schools. I think it's a distraction, a detriment, and I think it's also teaching them really, really, really poor habits. And on that note, I'd also like to know from the school board how we can change some of the things that we're doing as a community, i.e. late start Wednesdays. I don't quite understand what the logic is behind that. I say, they say it saves the school system money, but I believe it costs the community far more than it saves the system. We have to find special needs in order to provide, you know, before-school care rather than after-school care. It's really teaching our children, I don't know anybody in this room that sucks their workday late? Anyone? Once a week, anyone? So my children, once a week, get to start late. Really not great habits to be teaching them. And the final point that I really would like to drive home is, I don't know anybody in here that can do only ninety percent of their work at work every day and keep their job, but yet our children are allowed to pass at the six. And I quite don't, I don't understand that. I mean, I grew up in a school where seventy was the passing grade, and that was the lowest you could go. And I do believe that was the gold standard until recently. I have an understanding that it has to do with funding, and it has to do with the way that we approach the needs of some of our lesser, you know, endowed students or whatever, but I don't quite understand why lowering the bar for all students helps us in the future, because I don't know if I really want a society where you're only allowed, you only have to do sixty percent of your work. I mean, does it seem to make sense? So I know those are pretty strong and pretty powerful messages, but I really would like to know what the school board could do for us, especially on the, I would like to major address some of the late start Wednesdays. I mean, that's a real question. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Just to let you know, so that you know, typically with public comment session...
Sorry.
No, it's okay. We just take comments, and we don't get into discussion. But I would encourage you, you know, reach out to the superintendent or reach out to one of your board members, and I know they'd be happy to have a conversation with you about our social media policy, about our grading policy, and about, you know, what is behind late start Wednesday. So if we're not answering you now, it's not because we choose not to, but... So please, reach out to, you know, any of us, and we'd be glad to try and address your questions. Is there anyone else? Public comment?
Public comment, I prepared some paperwork to go along with. My public comment, my name is Classmate 20. I'm the school counselor at Morse High School. I'm also the mom to a third grader at Fisher Mitchell and an eighth grader at Dutch Middle School. And I'm here today to talk to each participant for just a few minutes about standardized testing. Before I get started though, I just want to thank you for your time and your service as school board members. And I just have a quick audit of the room if I might. I would like to show a hint if you took the SAT at some point in your educational career. Okay, any board members that took the SAT? Yeah, you? Okay, did you take the ACT at any point in your educational career? The ACT. Okay, you? Great, thank you. And how about show of hands if you took some sort of standardized test that was required by the state or the federal government or your school system? Okay, great, thanks so much. So I'm here today to talk with you about the new MEA, which is called the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. The front page handout I've given you discusses some of the outlines about what the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium is going to look like. It was developed by our guidance counselor, Mandy Knoll, who's spearheading this effort at the request of the state. One thing I want to call your attention to is this test is going to take eight hours and thirty minutes, and then students will also be asked to take a science augmentation exam that's going to take approximately an hour and twenty minutes. This will have to be stretched out over several days. I'm estimating four days of educational time will be disrupted for juniors and also every student in grades three through eight in order to meet this state requirement. The reason I'm here is because I believe that the RSU could do better than that. I believe Maine could do better than that, and I have spoken at the state level to the state school board about my belief that another test, the ACT, would be a better test to assess the goals of No Child Left Behind and the Common Core laws that the state of Maine has. The ACT has a test called ACT Aspire, which is this handout right here. And this is a vertically-aligned test for grades three through eight, which students can take so that they're ready to take the ACT when they are a junior in high school. The ACT is a standardized test that's accepted by every four-year college in the country. And it also meets the goals of the state's initiative. Now, you might be wondering, why am I speaking to the local school board? Well, I did try speaking to the state school board. I did try contacting Rochelle Tomp directly about this. And they consistently, Rochelle Tomp has consistently said, no, no, no. And so I've included an article, two articles for you. One is from South Carolina. South Carolina recently contracted to go and hold state to go with the ACT for grades three through eight and then eleven. But also, there's an article from Kansas. And this is where I think, I'm wondering, could the RSU one ask? State really prides itself on being a local-controlled state. And I'm asking if our school board, Rochelle Tomp said no to me, but I'm a guidance counselor. I don't represent the school district in the same way that the school board does or superintendent does. And I know in Kansas, for example, they are allowing their schools to decide what's going to best for their students. And they're going to figure out how to align those different test scores so that they can come up with the data they need for state reporting. The other thing that I included is, one of the biggest talking points that Common Core has is that these are common values that are being assessed by the Smarter Balance Test and the PARC test, and that every student naturally is going to take this test. But in a recent study done by Education Week, it says that only forty-two percent of students will actually be taking a Common Core-aligned test. Lots of states are reconsidering what's going to be best for their students. It's my belief that we want tests to be meaningful for kids. We want tests to not be so disruptive to the school week so that we're pulling kids away from personal time that helps them be prepared for tests. What is the caveat about the ACT is that it says every time you go to class you're preparing for the ACT. The ACT has always been a curriculum-aligned test that worked at college readiness. Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium says that they are a test for college readiness, but this test is a brand-new test that's just recently been created. It's only recently been piloted. They're still aligning what questions are going to be valuable questions. And yet, we're about to give this to all the kids, grades six through eight and eleven in the state of Maine. And if we're going to spend time testing our kids, I'd like them to be tested with a test that has a lot of research behind it. So that's what I came to say. And I just want to leave you with two thoughts. When I spoke to the state school board afterwards, I sent an email, and one of the follow-up questions that the state school board member asked is, who's behind you? You know, does this have any political legs, the things you're saying? What you're saying makes a lot of sense, but is there anyone behind you? I'm a busy woman, I'm a guidance counselor. I really want to tire myself and take a really good care of my students. And it's hard for me to mobilize lots of people behind me. So I may not get anywhere at the state level, but I'm asking, can the RSU ask, could we take... Rochelle Tomp says no, she says that it's not possible, but that's her truth. She's now the current acting commissioner since this decision was made to go with the Smarter Balance Assessment. She's in general made that decision. And Rochelle Tomp is the fifth commissioner of education since that decision was made. So a lot of changes have happened, and I'm just asking if people are being thoughtful if they're doing their research. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, anyone else from the public? All right. We will move on to item 7.0, staff reports, and I'll turn this over to Patrick.
Yeah, Lawrence Gobeck is here, and he's organized this event. So if you can't see, we're going to use the screen quite a bit. Board members may want to move, but I'll turn it over to Lawrence and Chihuahua staff at this point.
I'll try and just talk, and if it's not loud enough, don't be shy. While this is turning on, I think at home, I want to introduce a few people who came to help present this tonight. Lisa Packard from Chihuahua, a great student from Chihuahua. As you'll see in the slideshow, and I apologize, it's really long. As you'll see, this was a real partnership between RSU one and Chihuahua. We worked very, very closely together, trying to create the best experience we could. It seems like it's coming to life. While it's coming to life, I want to thank, obviously, Chihuahua for all the work that you guys put in, but also members of the board, RSU one, the administration, the principals, the teachers, the parents, the kids, who thought this was a good idea. It was about a year ago today when I came to the board with a pretty out-there idea to get all the eighth graders canoeing. I was hopeful, I'm sort of an idealist, but I sort of can't believe that it has happened. It was so successful. So...
I think we're almost there.
So FLOW standards for fundamental learning on water obviously has some ties to the medium that we're traveling on, but also sort of how you, you know, how you go about life. It is not always easy to be living with a group of people for the first time in tents, traveling like new. So it requires a fair amount of maturity and tolerance. Chihuahua, obviously, was our partner, RSU one. We also got generous support from Bad Savings Institution, from First Federal Savings, from the Davenport Trust, and from Bowdoin College. Bowdoin basically opened up their coffers about four years ago and said, "You guys need stuff, just let us know." Michael Woodruff, who runs the outing club for Bowdoin, was really excited that this was happening. His kids go to school in Brunswick, and, you know, he had some pangs of regret about his decision to move from Pittsburgh. So, and all the photos that are in here are photos that are taken in the course area. So the course area, for those who aren't familiar, is right over there, about two miles, and Mont Sweet Bay, Brookings Bay, Akamoff Bay. So in year one, we knew we lost the budget cycle and so late in the school year. It was a concern that kids might not get their act together, parents might not notice that this was happening. So we were worried about participation. There are one hundred and forty-seven eighth graders currently in RSU one, and out of that one hundred and forty-seven, we have ninety-six attend, which is fifty boys, forty-six girls. Five of whom are here right now in the audience. They're going to come talk in a little bit. It worked out to about sixty-five percent, a little bit more than sixty-five percent, which for year one, we're very happy about. Another statistic that just blew by was that every kid who went stayed the whole time. So if you want to speak to that, you were shocked by that statistic.
We have thousands of students coming to Chihuahua, and not, I believe, not every school has a hundred percent state approval. But with homesickness issues, and we try to work with students through that, but if you go out to the islands on a first-year experience, piloting the program, excellence to say.
There's at least, there's one close call, and I, if not close call, safety-wise, close call, somebody who's very homesick. And had to be sort of talked down, and we did. She had a great time. So this collaboration involved a lot of subsidy. So in the end, RSU one allocated fifteen thousand dollars in the fiscal year fourteen-fifteen budget for this trip. That, well, you'll see where other monies came from. We have donations, the Chihuahua Foundation cut their tuition by a third. So normally, this trip is, well, let me go backwards a little bit. This trip, I guess the kernel for this trip was planted in winter of 2013. And when I started conversations with Andy Bezon back then, the price was lower. And that was the price we were working with. So just for everybody's, just to be transparent, other school districts are paying, would be paying much more for this trip than we were paying without the subsidy. So looking at that, Chihuahua gave us thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. Bad Savings, five thousand, First Federal gave us five thousand, Davenport gave us three thousand. Bowdoin College, like I said, gave us gear. We have been receiving donations from people who've heard about the program, either through blog, through Facebook, sorry. But I did put it out there. I have friends, you know, all over the world, all over the country. So we've got out there, and we've been receiving some money from places outside of Maine as well. In the beginning, Patrick and I sort of came up with a hundred dollars as what sounded like a reasonable sum for somebody to pay for a week-long experience, canoeing and camping, getting fed, you know, transportation out there. We got a little feedback from the community that, you know, we forgot, we didn't know this was happening, we proved it in June. We're feeling really stretched, and we have to buy equipment for sports. We have to buy school supplies, the school year's starting up. And coincided with us getting a little info of money, and we sat down and decided, can we do fifty dollars? So we dropped it to fifty. Sixty-one percent, oh, sorry, sixty-one students, sixty-four percent of the participants, they paid that fifty dollars. I believe our free reduced numbers are in public, I'm not sure if they are. But if you were to look at those statistics, you'll see that people dug deep to pay for this. And yet, we had three thousand fifty dollars from the kids. Our thought is, moving forward, it is now November twenty-fourth. December, we're planning to go to the seventh graders and say, hey, this is happening. Let's start planning. What do you do? How do you save money? How do you save fifty dollars? How do you make fifty dollars? And of course, we're not going to have kids knocking on strangers' doors and asking to write leaves, but can you... to rip leaves, but can you base it for a family member, a friend? Can you do chores around the house? Is there some way that you can set up a system so you can save $50 by September of 2015? And my opinion, I think Patrick would agree, that's a reasonable goal. It also is sort of an important part of the process of the experience. We've had conversations, again, being totally transparent, some teachers said, "Why do kids have to pay anything? This is school." But I think it would be a missed opportunity if we allowed kids to go without paying anything. I think it teaches responsibility. I think it gets children invested in the experience that they're going to partake in, they have to pay something for it. I think it teaches lifelong skills. So, that's a very decision. Some pictures of trip. I have a back base. That was the, that's the north end of Castle Island. So, like I said, this is a partnership approach. Chauki and I worked really, really closely on this. This all started when I applied for a student aid grant, because I had the idea to buy 50 sea kayaks for RSU One and just run sea kayaking trips, which would have been, I'd be giving this presentation from behind bars from now on. So, I did reach out to Chauki, and we started this conversation, and it was just a serendipitous event. It really, really came together beautifully. You know, less than talking about standardized tests, well, suddenly, this year, we're not taking the kneecap test in the fall. Boom, that opened up the fall for us. And this trip really did not happen. Not really. It couldn't happen. Couldn't be done safely, and safety is the number-one concern. Water is still acceptably warm in the fall. If we were to flip this and do it in the spring, not a good idea. There are other trips you could do, but you certainly couldn't canoe out to the island safely. We're committed to, we meet quite frequently. If you ever have the opportunity to meet the Chauki people, Wednesday is leftover day. So, if you have a choice of when to make your meeting, go Wednesday. It's really good, it's amazing. So, we meet because we want to make this the best it can be. We're also really concerned with the longevity of the program. This is not a one-time thing. Tim, you asked us way back when, you know, "What's this look like 10 years out? Do you have a plan?" And I thought, we should talk about that. So, we do talk about that a lot. Back to the tuition, even though the tuition that was promised to us was, I'm guessing, close to 20% lower than what's going to be charged next year, we are locked into that tuition for 14, 15, and 16. That price isn't going to change for the next two years. That's a big savings. And, you know, that is a testament to the flexibility and commitment from Chauki. They're not in this for the money. They really want to reach out to local schools and local communities. So, the objectives of the program were to foster a culture of grit and grappling, strengthen relationships, develop new friendships, build a sense of place, and focus on interdisciplinary writing. Obviously, we have eighth graders in two schools in this district, and a big, a big goal was to have those kids have a shared experience, ideally, a shared experience that they were doing together. This year, I would say, I'd give us, I'd give us a C-plus, B-minus on mixing kids from different schools. It was hard logistically, and I can talk about that later. I think moving forward, I don't think we will run into the same problems. But this being year one, and happening so close to the start of the school year, was a challenge. So, the academic program that we chose, basically, as soon as this was approved by the board, we said, "Okay, we've got to do something." BMS is an expeditionary learning school. That is a model of education that basically spends two big chunks of the year doing what are called expeditions. They are interdisciplinary, they're interdisciplinary activities, educational experiences that involve art, music, reading, writing, photography. The expedition that we chose was something called Water is Life. This is a curriculum that was written by the expeditionary head office for the state of New York. The state of New York has adopted expeditionary learning as their, as their curriculum. I think that started this year, I'm not sure. So, Water is Life is all about fresh water and access to fresh water around the world. So, there's a book, it's called The Big Thirst by Charles Swishman. It's a pretty high-level book that talks about how people use water around the world to make microchips, to water their agricultural fields, to drink, to shower, to flush toilets. It was another bit of serendipity that we were focusing on fresh water while we were living out on islands surrounded by saltwater with absolutely zero fresh water available. So, we had to be pretty careful about the fresh water we used. Kyle Eaton, the language arts teacher from Woolwich here, related to me, do you want to tell the story about the kids having to carry their water?
Yeah, I mean, we had just been reading about some statistics about, you know, people in other parts of the country, other parts of the world, who have to travel, you know, a certain amount. I can't remember the exact statistic, whether it's a few kilometers every day, a certain percentage of the world is to travel a certain number of kilometers every day to get fresh water. And, you know, as we are carrying our jugs of water down to our campsite where eventually we're going to shove off and go to the islands, a couple of kids were like, "Oh, now I know how it feels, you know, to have to carry your water every day." And, you know, I was like, yeah, I mean, that's sort of kind of the point here, is that we want you to get a little bit of sort of that experience of what some of these people who have to do this for their real life have to go through. So, that's sort of fit right into that idea.
So, after that blowing endorsement, we all decided, it was, it was challenging to do what was primarily bookwork out of the islands. We all worked really hard to adapt the curriculum to the time out of the island. Many, many trees were killed in the making of endless photocopied sheets that were going out, different ones for each week. And it was hard, it was really difficult. Learning targets were laminated, they were sent out to wannagons. Some of the stuff worked, some of the stuff was more difficult. It is challenging to do internet research when you're on an island without the internet or a device to access it. So, that, and we did make accommodations for that, but that's how this thing is written. This thing is not written for kids canoeing in the wilderness. So, it was a challenge. I feel like there were successes and definitely things we will do differently. We did find that the time on Flow really meant itself to reflection. Matt Hamilton couldn't be here today, he's the guidance counselor, one of the guidance counselors at BMS. He said, he came up with this, I think he done it for another organization at some point. "Hey, kids, think of two things about yourself, you want to leave out here, you do not want to bring back. Some aspect of your personality, some character trait, you know, do you gossip, or do you, do you think you're selfish, or self, what's something you want to leave back here? And also, what are a couple of things about yourself that you learned in these five days that you want to bring back to your life?" And that was pretty profound. Some of the things the kids wrote were, were very meaningful. So, we had made a commitment to work on the curriculum for next year. I can't speak to Woolwich, actually, I can't speak to either Woolwich or BMS. I don't know if the upcoming seventh graders will be doing Water is Life, but I do know he is likely not going to be part of Flow next year, because we're going to come up with a place-based curriculum that talks about things from the perspective of where we are. It was a stretch talking about water shortages in Australia and India while sitting on an island in Mont Sweet Bay. That, you know, we can draw parallels, but we're talking more about looking at the islands as a case study and maybe adapting them to a broader study of water use. All right, let's see, how to start.
So, when we have our groups experiencing lessons out on these islands and also on the Chauki neck, we encourage students to, they were provided with challenges both as a group and also individually. So, they were each an important role, making sure that a group activity would be accomplished. So, it could be loading up here, it was exploring an area and bringing back information, cooking dinner, and speaking of, we literally have the learning skills that students learned for how to build a fire, like gathering wood to build a fire, cook over the fire, and set up tents, how to lead or trace in the woods. We also had ecology lessons and speaking to the place-based education. What, what we got, this feedback from the chaperones to attend to this trip were that the lessons that are the Chauki instructors, instructors provided were very natural. So, they had all been planned out and carefully researched, but the way in which the students experienced learning about the forest and the plants, the water, like the rocky shore, and the ecology out on the islands as well as on the neck, the Chauki neck, was very natural. So, students would be with their instructor, and as things were discovered by students and pointed out by the instructors, students would be learning. And they were really coming from a place of curiosity and wonder, "Wow, what is this? I haven't seen this before." And then exploring what they were seeing rather than information being transported from somewhere else. It was all drawing from what they were immediately experiencing. Truly place-based education. Out of that, so there were ecology lessons and natural history lessons that were based on what students were observing. We also invited a guest from, he actually, Dr. Fred has been our naturalist for the camp program at Chauki, and we invited him to volunteer during four weeks of the flow program. And he came and worked with students to gather data and analyze the data on green crafts. And as Lawrence said at the beginning, or actually, when Chair announced there, and then there is, as we speak, his presentation in back about the green craft study, and some of that data was collected during the weeks out on the islands.
Another really important part for us at Chauki is that sense of community that we really tried to develop within each group that we worked with. And so, we did that on this program through, through the real challenge of paddling out to these islands and working with another partner and a new, but also through really regimented daily chores and responsibilities that rotated through the groups that we're working with. And they included the kebab activities and, as I mentioned, the travel by canoe. For many of these kids, they'd never paddled before, so hopefully, that's a lifetime skill that they're going to want to do again as they grow older. And then, we also find that with each one of our programs, particularly in this day and age, it's really time to build in that time for reflection and introspection. Boy, there's no better place to do that than out on an island that you have to yourself. We also put a lot of responsibility on the kids to find their way to the islands. So, we did a map and compass and coastal navigation exercise, and they got really comfortable using both the map and the chart to navigate through Mont Sweet and Brookings Bay and Hell's Gate, which can be a pretty challenging place to navigate through when you're out there on the walk. And then they did also cook over some open fires, both on Chauki neck. Last night at the program, the kids paddled back to Chauki neck. And then when they were out on the islands, we took more of a lead no trace approach to fires, and they were building fires within fire cans, so it's not going to have any impact on the island. And then, as I mentioned, the, just the real challenges that they were faced by, by really having to work together to paddle the three miles out to Castle or Barry or a little bit further out to Beal. And obviously, out on the islands, we really did try to leave no impact. We have a lot of folks who use our islands down in the bay, and we have ten platforms on some of them, but really focused on those principles of lead no impact.
So, again, this is a photo from the green craft study done with Dr. Fred. And Dr. Fred is doing these studies in several places along the bay. So, this data that was being collected was really valuable to him. He's doing it over a series, over a period of time. This wasn't just to get the kids active outside, because they were being citizen scientists
Okay, so now, collecting data on humans, not crabs. I thought it would be interesting to look at answers to some questions from the kids before they went and after they came back. So, there, I made a survey, and the multiple-choice questions, there really wasn't any clip in the data. The, you know, kids took the survey on a Tuesday one week, and they took it again Tuesday, next week, or two weeks later. So, that didn't really show very much movement, but the narrative responses were, well, we'll see. I asked these questions. These were all squished into one. The questions were, "What are your thoughts about the trip? How do you feel about traveling by canoe, looking out for fires, sleeping in tents, looking outside? What do you think about learning outside for weeks?" That was all squished into one question. Please answer that. The responses, I coded them as either cold, meaning, "This was awful," hot, "This blew my mind, I cannot believe this just happened," warm, "Really good," or cool, "Eh." So, this is how that came out. Four percent of the kids hated us. Seven percent thought it was all right. Forty-three percent thought it was great. Forty-six percent said, "Oh, my God." And looking at those two numbers together, we're looking at 89% who thought this was a really great thing to do. So, I was really happy to see that. I, I'm not sure which slide I'm at, okay. I thought it was right here. I thought I would give voice, and the kids didn't like it. The stuff that they said was really about the concept of being outside in the way from home. It wasn't specific about, "I don't like Chauki," or "I don't like..." They just didn't like that idea of camping. Anyway, there were some issues with groups. Some kids felt like, boy, my group members did not help out as much as I was helping. And that was really frustrating. And that's real, and that happens. I mean, it's not Disney World. Some groups function better than others. Some kids, you know, go-getters. Boy, we would have got a lot more work done if we'd been in the classroom. So, the, before I plaster, now, this is why this thing is so long. There were so many glowing reviews from kids, and I did not edit any of the stuff that you're going to see from kids. I didn't know which ones to leave out, which ones to put in. There are a lot there. But I think before I go with the written feedback, I would like to invite Delaney. Is Cindy still here?
She is.
Okay. Abby, Lauren, Ava, if you would be going to come up here. And just in full disclosure, the BMS kids might have had a chance to prepare something. I know that you guys did not, but I thought it would be useful if the board had questions for you as students who did this, for you to answer those questions. So, are you comfortable coming up here to the honor? So are you comfortable coming up here to, to honor? And thank you very much for taking the time to be here today. So board, if you have questions for these four people who went on Flow, unrehearsed. Is there anyone on the board who has questions?
Sure, I'll have questions. Um, so I don't know which of you guys are, will you say their name, but, um, uh, what? Do you think that you did anything before this trip at school that kind of influenced your time out there? Projects, experiences? Did you think that there was anything that happened before this trip that kind of propelled you to do it?
So, Mr. Dean's kind of a person who, I don't know which. So we did all these projects where you discover like power, you know, transport stuff out here. We, you're doing a research project about it where we learned how to read a little bit of Big Thirst. I'd say that's not my favorite book, but, so, it's good. So we focused on those things and we got to the island. It prepared us because we learned about the stuff from the island that we learned in the book. So we didn't have to break the book out with us. We had either a page or a page and a half that we had to either read or finalize the stuff to, like, diagram. It was like a half hour lesson a day. So we didn't do a lot to prepare ourselves, but when we got there, we felt prepared because of our background knowledge or that knowledge beyond earlier.
Anyone else from the board? I just, aside from paddling in a canoe and setting fires, what, what do you think is most important from learning experience?
Uh, well, um, my, my, I'm not a school, but I personally think that it was more not simply of learning how you cook or paddle a canoe, but more coexistence with people that you don't choose as your friends, but more kind of consider half your friend with. But I think just simply we, I mean, there were some people that I had no idea existed and we came out of the group as being actually good friends. And so I think one of the best learning experiences was simply kind of intermingling with the students that we're going to be here with next year. And also just learning the things that, and, um, things that will benefit us in the future through the days by, so we live in the day. It was kind of, it, it was unique because we learned a lot of things that wouldn't have been like, like.
Please.
So, like, again, I didn't go with BMS kids. My group got switched off somehow, so I just went with my college friend here. So we only had two groups and we stayed on one island. So I didn't get to correspond to all those BMS kids, but, um, I did learn a lot more about the in, like, I was in a group where I knew almost everything, I knew almost everything about them. So I learned deeper thoughts about like what they actually do in life. I didn't just see like their school life, I didn't just see when they're with E-life. I saw like how they correspond with everything, how it do with, like, the environment, how it do with working in separate groups than them, than their normal lives. But we also learned about all of, a lot about saving water and how to cook outside. I would say, I mean, it tastes better outside.
Anyone else from the board? I just have a quick question. So talk to me a little bit, and I'd like to hear from all of you. Talk to me about how your experience with Flow integrated with your experience in the classroom. Because we essentially took you out of the classroom or provided this program, took you out of the classroom for a week. How did that experience with Flow integrate with what you were learning or have been learning in the classroom?
Start.
Go ahead.
So what we learned out on the island was what the people in class were learning, well, were learning, what we were doing. So when we did the Venn diagram, they were doing the Venn diagram, something like that. So when they left, we had, we got to those things. So it never really clashed where we had to do certain things. But integrating from outside into the classroom, I'd say a lot harder than integrating with the classroom outside. Because we're so used to seeing trees or not walking on flat ground or not seeing so many people that when you get back, you're just kind of confused or like you don't know how to work out. There's so many people waiting for you to respond, but you're so used to just like waiting. It's like four or five people, up to seven, that listen to your answer, but now there's over twenty of them by the bottom. It's a lot harder to do that.
Here from, yeah, so, Tim. So just, uh, to come totally clean, I was BMS today and Lauren and Abby said, oh, we can write something up. So they actually, I think, did you guys write something up? Well, which kids did not? Okay, but do you'd like to share that? It's time to go.
No pressure.
Okay, so, um, my name is Lauren Bobell and I'm an eighth grader at Batman Middle School. And a couple of months ago, some of my classmates and I went on the Flow trip. My experiment, my experience at Flow was something I'll never forget because of all the new friendships, um, I made, all the new experiences, new food, and tons of memories. The first day of Flow was very fun because I had no friends in my group. But as the week went on, I became really good friends with everyone in my group. I am grateful with my new friend, friendships, because every month, on the seventeenth, my Flow group meets and has lunch together. I think learning new things about nature was very fun and helpful. In my opinion, every kid should experience something on Flow. Flow was a very educational experience, but also a very fun experience. I'm really glad I made the decision to go.
Hi, my name is Abby Baker. I'm an eighth grader at Batman Middle School. When I went on the Flow trip in September, I was unsure about going. Just was not too big away from my family and having a reunion and sleeping tents. After all, thinking about it, I decided that it would be a good experience. So I went on the trip. The first day was when all the kids that went were separated into different groups. I got separated from my best friend. And as I looked around at the people I had in my group, I was afraid I would lose them. As the week went on, I started realizing how much fun I was having and being able to talk to new people. I know the kids in my group for two years, but never talked to them, which I'm happy that changed. Flow was something I would totally do again. It was definitely an educational and a fun experience. My group got really close and we even had a talent show the last night we went in. And of course, we laughed a lot. It was, it was special to me knowing that all the kids in my group were so different, but we managed, um, we managed anyway to keep them and have fun. If there are any unsure students in the future about going to Flow, don't hesitate because it was so awesome. Everyone who helped donate money definitely decide their money about.
Any other questions from the board? And thank you so much for speaking or presenting. Lawrence?
Quick word cloud, um, that I, I don't know if you know about these things, but I stuffed a bunch of narrative from the, uh, eighty-nine percent of positives. So it's the biggest words, other words that showed up the most. So I guess kids have time. I'm not gonna read.
Can you guys read these or can you read them aloud? That was Rita?
No.
Okay.
It was overall an awesome experience that I would've never had if it wasn't for Flow. I created many, many memories that I'll never ever forget. It was so nice to not have electronics or any of that. It was like a break from all our stress and drama and I came back so happy. It was so awesome to be one-on-one to the outdoors and definitely something I'll recommend. Anyway, relaxes. I had awesome laughs and an awesome time. And then off to Beal Island. I loved the Flow trip. I thought it was exciting and very fun. The canoeing was fun, but tired. Sleeping outside was a blast and I would pack up and go again in a heartbeat. It was absolutely amazing. Everything about it was perfect. Even the fact that I wasn't involved with my friends was okay. I loved living in the outdoors. Even though the canoeing was hard, it was a great learning experience. The most amazing part was just sitting quietly on the rocks and staring at the night sky.
On a scale from one to ten, Flow was a twelve.
Flow was fun. It was good making new friends. The sunsets were pretty. Watching the stars at night was amazing. Flow was very fun. I'd been camping before, so it wasn't that different, but making new friends was a great new experience. I enjoyed the Flow trip. I'd never been camping for a week before. I learned many skills that I didn't know before I went on Flow. And the skills that I learned are certainly going to help me in other times in my life. It's a picture of when we come back off the water, de-commission all the gear, we have to clean everything and make it as nice as it was, hopefully nicer than it was when we got it. Sleeping in a tent was amazing and so fun to do. Living outside was fun and an awesome experience, but I thought I would hate it, but I ended up loving it. I feel a lot better trying these days. Flow was the best experience of my whole life so far.
I want to say after that last five, the, the positive effect that an experience like this has on kids, um, you know, this, this can change lives. I know the kid who said that last quote. That person does not have a lot of chances to do things like this. And so the generosity and the vision of the school boards, superintendent, donors, Chauki, that person's life is gonna be really different, um, as that person reflects back on this experience. This is, uh, the group that Lauren was in. There they are on the beach at Beal and then here they are at BMS. I think that was last, that was the seventeenth official month, right? Then getting lunch with their chaperone, Mr. Hamilton. Now, back when I was describing this, I talked about my experience as an instructor and day three being sort of that pivotal moment. It's day one, kids are like, wow. I'm out there, you know, I'm not, I'll just quit after tomorrow. And day two is like, oh, this is kind of real, we're maybe too far for your hype back. And day three is when things click. Day three, okay, I'm here, I'm starting to understand how things work. That's when the real growth happens. That's when you get this transformative change. When people say, okay, this is my new place and I'm gonna deal with it. So, so thankful that we were able to do this for four nights and five, five days. Um, there are a bunch of teachers in the house. Every single one of the teachers who went said, please, 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 can I go next year? And I said, I don't know, if there'd be enough space. Um, we had teachers who were the teachers of these kids who went. We also had some allied arts teachers and I have been approached by other teachers, uh, biz ed teachers. Maria, the health teacher, went, um, this year. But people are basically scrambling, saying, I wanna go. It sounded great, please come. I think Denise, Ryan, and Leanne would have to flip a coin to see who goes next.
I'm gonna go.
And I thought, do any of the teachers have anything they would like to say? Or do the board members have any questions for the teachers?
Can I just, I just want to say one thing really quickly. Um, when you made your comment, you said, aside from the canoeing experience and cooking out, what do you get out of it? Well, I was in a canoe with children because we would switch off. And kids would be, I'd be like, don't you just love being out like this? And I realized very quickly that all these kids have grown up here and very few of them have ever been on the water and looked back at the land and really been in a boat. Maybe a powerboat zipping down the river to go somewhere. But to really experience it, it hadn't really happened for most of them. So just that whole experience of being with those kids, or kids who said, I know how to canoe. Do you know how to canoe in two hours in a headwind heading out down, you know, Hockamock Bay? No, they've never done that before. And those kids, they just, they dug deep down and found out they could do things that they probably never would have tried to do before. So I will duke it out with Mrs. Ryan next year to be the teacher who gets to go. Um, I'll probably lose because she's a science teacher and she wants to do it. But it's definitely been well worth everybody's effort to do this project.
I can say something too. I'm Monica Wright and I'm a science teacher at Middle School. I went on the first week. I also have a second grader at Dignule. That's a different relative. And so I envision this as a ten-year plan. Like, I don't want to have this be a one-year, two-year thing. In my mind, I was going to make this special so that my kids could also then improve in the culture and build it to be part of what is going on. And the one story I'm gonna share is I was canoeing with a student and it took us nine times to get through the back row of Hell's Gate. And we were in tears by the end of getting through. The perseverance, we, we, they offered, Chauki always offered us a toe. And we looked at it and said, no, we're not gonna get a toe. You know, our arms were shaking. We've been in and out of the, of the eddies, over and over. And I was six and I thought we would like, at least get it. Took us nine times. That kind of perseverance part is something that I would treasure.
So I'll sort of piggyback on a couple of those sort of things. Two things that stand out to me is that I think kids really learn that they can do things that they never thought were possible. And for me, that's huge. They, you know, I've, I've been going on a camp that's with Chauki for a number of years, previous school district. And when you see kids who think that they can't canoe, they learn that they can canoe. Who's, you know, they, they don't think that they, uh, can chop wood because dads never allowed them and you teach them how to do it, they learn, oh my goodness, I can. Or that they don't think that they can cook something and they learn, yeah, let's just show you how to do it and then they, they can. These are lifelong skills and that they're taught that they just, they, they can do. That is the hugest thing I think they get out of it. The other aspect that I think that Lawrence and I were just talking about today, learning doesn't just happen in this building or in the EMS. Uh, learning happens everywhere. And a lot of learning happens better out there. And doesn't happen as well in here. And so we can have the opportunity to take our kids someplace where that learning happens better. I think it's in our best interest to get them out there.
And if I could just, really quick, I'm Eli Wilson from Batman Middle School. I would just say to tie on to that, in terms of students learning better out there, there's something really powerful about having such, like, you, you are so accountable to the group that you are in. So a lot of the things that we saw or that I saw, um, were, were students having to realize that their actions really affect the, the members around them if they're not helping take down their tent. That's very, um, very clear and, and very obvious. So those sorts of just social, um, working with people in trying situations, I thought was really powerful. Um, I also think that, um, leadership, um, was something that, that I saw a lot of. Like, we had, if there are parents here that, um, were, that were worried that night, we had the terrible thunderstorm while people were out on the islands. That was a, that was a, yeah, harrowing moment for, for many, I'm sure. But, but hearing students in tents comforting each other as we go around to, you know, check in with people and hearing people say, you know, it's, it's going away now. You can hear the, the thunder's further away and, you know, those sorts of things where, where kids are sort of stepping up, looking out for the best interest of the other students. It was really great to see.
And I just would like to say, even though I, I didn't, wasn't involved in this, I had my own experiences as well with that. And I remember those times being very impactful. Having some time for experience, having some time to look into yourself, having some time away from the pressures, the general pressures. It sounds like the small classroom size, but this is the information, this is It sounds like the small classroom size, but this is the information, this is the thing we've been hearing for so long that, you know, it's important to have some time. And it takes, and it's a challenge. And it's not just about the numbers, it's not just about the grades, and it's not just about the testing. It's about how we interact with each other. And I really think that was probably a very strong message that these all policies reflect on from this. And I think it's something that we can really learn from this. Kind of ties into what I said earlier, I know, but I really truly think it's something we should not let go of. And I really hope my son, who is six years old, gets a chance to take this opportunity.
My name is Miranda Goman, I'm the health teacher at Bath Middle School. And just to echo what the students and teachers that clearly said, it was an inspiring trip. Just to, from a teacher's perspective, just kind of take a step back, really take in everything that was happening in front of you and seeing the kids work together. To hear them go from day one and seeing that the group that they were in kind of moved on, that they weren't with their friends. And then from the last day, say, we have the best crew. It was really, really nice to see that.
Thank you. Here are some quotes that I got from teachers. When I went back to graduate school, twelve years ago, working kids, this was my dream. Here we are, doing it.
You said that.
Not, I lied. That's not what I said. Kids have a chance to spend time with each other, get to know each other, work out their conflicts, and come out to the other side with lasting relationships. It was experiences like Flo that got me into education in the first place. Flo created relationships between my students and me that would have never happened otherwise. Flo was the best five days of my professional career. We, as adults, the students, had the opportunity to experience safe risks that we had never had the chance to before. There was no enabling or getting out of it. Took our canoe nine tries to paddle against the current through one section of the Sheepskin River. It was really hard, and we had no choice but to persevere. Flo was one of the best experiences I've had as a teacher. Being able to witness the students collaborate on everything from cooking to reading to paddling, to staying warm and dry was totally worth the time and effort.
Lauren, just before you move to the parent, the teachers that are here and the ones that are not here, I've already spoken to a lot of them. Our teachers, you know, they have a contract, as you know, they work hard, they put in a lot of power, more hours than they, you know, than they need to. And this is a great example of, you know, a lot of our, several of our staff volunteering to go and leaving on Monday, coming back on Friday. As you can see, some have young kids, have families of their own, and it's quite a commitment to give up their old time, extra time. So, those who are here, thank you, and I'll be sure to see you.
Are there any parents here? That's a joke. You guys want to come up? You want to stay where you are?
Who wants to come up?
Well, I thought, you know, again, these guys have nothing prepared as far as I know. So, if the board has questions for parents and kids who went.
Well, I'm happy to answer questions, but my name is Kate Dempsey. I'm in Bath. My daughter actually transferred to Bath Middle School this year. And one of the reasons we did is because we knew she'd get to go on this experience for 50 bucks. I know how much it would have cost for her to go to Chauki week on her own. So, that was just an amazing opportunity. But I do just want to thank, and I think so much has been said. I think one of the most important things is this building a community together. We were just laughing about the thunderstorm. My daughter wasn't on that trip, but every trip that went out, I thought, there's kids out there right now on this island. And when that thunderstorm was happening, I knew of one girl who was terrified of thunder who was out there. I felt like the whole community was embracing this opportunity. So, I guess I just want to say to the RSG One and to the teachers and Chauki, we can't be all the time as a family, but to send my daughter out with her peers and with kids that she wasn't friends with, that was just an amazing experience to build a community. And I think it's now kind of collective spirit that we have to engender. So, I want to thank you all for making it possible.
Is that my daughter you're talking to?
Yeah, it was.
So, I was laying in my bed that night when the thunderstorm hit, and I was, I was in my house. And I thought, my daughter's out on this island, you know, what's she thinking right now? She must be terrified. But then I thought, you know, the folks at Chauki, the teachers, they're going to keep her safe. They're used to this. It's not the first time there's been a thunderstorm in Maine. She'll get through it. And she did get through it, and she came back a better person for it. I'm just thankful that I'm not, my wife and I are not campers or not paddlers. And Katie probably wouldn't have gotten a chance to do that if she'd just found mom and dad. So, I'm really thankful that she had the chance to experience something that she probably normally wouldn't experience. And just this idea of the beauty, the beauty of nature, the central place. You know, we all live in Maine because, one of the reasons we live in Maine is because it's so beautiful. When I was growing up, I grew up in Syracuse, New York, landlocked, upstate New York, next to Anandoga Lake, which was the most polluted lake in the country. And I, as a kid, would have never had these chances to do what our kids have done. So, I'm really thankful that we live in a state that has this natural beauty. And we have programs and teachers and parents and everybody that cares that's created this so that our kids can go out and experience the natural beauty of our wonderful state. And then, I have a 10-year-old son, Owen, who's in fifth grade. He'll be in the middle school next year. And one of the reasons why I want to see this program continue is so that when he gets to eighth grade, he can experience what his sister experienced.
I would just echo what's already been said. We are a camping family. My son is in Boy Scouts, and so he gets an opportunity to do a lot of these kinds of things. But I think this was really a unique opportunity for the class of 2019 to come together as a group. He was on the island with Woolwich students. It had a really positive experience. And I think that's just going to help them as a class moving forward, staying healthy spiritually. And I think it's great. I would also support it continuing.
I'm a teacher as well as a parent. My daughter's eight, but I'm making her go over. And one of the things that, as a teacher and as a mom, I really love that she took this opportunity or had this opportunity to go and be together with students from, she came home to her mom, you know, I got to know kids who I don't work with every day. And the collaboration and the engagement in that learning experience, she said, I love this. She was there on that island with the students, fully engaged as a teacher. That's like one of the biggest things you want to, you know, reach as a teacher, is have everyone working together and engaged. I had the opportunity to know the eighth grade group as a teacher. And just seeing the approach of learning, taking what they learned in the classroom, bringing it out there, and coming back with a rich experience that sticks for the rest of their lives is really wonderful. So, I thank everyone who made this possible and hope to see it just grow and continue in the future.
I agree. I'm Valerie Lawrence' mom, also a teacher, and I value this experience that my daughter was able to have. I'm not the camping type, so I don't have those opportunities, but this was a fabulous experience for her. Besides being in a group with no friends, and she was freaking out at first about, she's very excited and looks forward to the monthly meetings that she has with her Flo group and loves her new friends. But not to embarrass her, one of the first things that she says, she goes, oh my gosh, mom, we had to go to the bathroom in bags. Literally something I've never done as a grown woman, and at 13, to do that with your peers, that's huge. And that they all just did it, and it was something that was just part of their daily routine. That's pretty cool.
Did the board have questions? Ready, parents? We're almost there. The next steps are to, thank you very, very much to everybody who's come out to talk about this. It was, it was terrific. And my quote was, it was the best five days of my professional career, just to, you know, the suspense was killing me. Next steps, we hope to get into some serious PR with the seventh graders at Woolwich and BMS. I don't know about the cafeteria here, I see a screen there. So, at BMS, we've had photos of the canoe trips halfway through the cafeteria. That's definitely generated some interest. Kids are talking about it in the younger grades. We're going to really revise our Flo curriculum. As opposed to doing four different curricula, which is four weeks, we hope to do the same thing over and over. Make it a place-based case study, sort of cut down on the logistical mayhem. We've had some conversations about mixing benefits and the challenges of mixing BMS kids and Woolwich kids. That's a real priority, and I think we can make it happen. Especially, you know, the way things shook out this year, people came to school and said, canoe trip, what? Can you trip? And we were getting some pushback from parents about a variety of issues. Some other parents said, this is great. But we knew there was, there was a sort of groundswell conversation about, is this really going to happen? And so, we made the move that, you've got your paperwork in, you're going to go week one. So, we took some of our logistical maneuverings, and we had to sort of throw them out to fill up week one. So, the mixing that we envisioned was sort of a casualty of taking who we had at that moment. I don't think that's going to be an issue ever again. We've set up the schedule for 2015. We've heard, been talking about that. Looking at dates, Labor Day is really late this year, so we won't be able to go any earlier, but we'll probably be able to do the exact same date we did this year. The capacity for Chauki is 40 kids at a time, so this year we had 96 kids. We spread it out over four weeks. Ostensibly, I'm guessing we're going to get less than 65% participation. But we might be able to squeeze, even if we get 120 kids, that's three weeks. We might have a fourth week for kids who had a hard time getting their paperwork in or couldn't save the money or for whatever reason couldn't go early. I have the honor to continue to do analysis, design analysis of this program. My objective is eventually to present this, I would love to present this at an expeditionary learning conference. I think this is important stuff for people to hear regionally. I think it's important stuff for people to hear nationally. I think it's an opportunity for RSG One to really stand out as a leader for this kind of educational experience. So, that's something that I am looking at in the future. And from Chauki M.
Yeah, further steps. We are really going to place ourselves soon to make sure that we have some continued support from the schools and from our funders and from the community. We will be hosting a reception in April, and the intention for that timing is that we really want to gear up energy and enthusiasm to prepare for the following season. I foresee every year is just going to get smoother and more effective because we were still arranging some of the final details of this in the summertime, whereas we're going to be meeting with donors and having reception in April of this year. And we do already have dates set for the following year. We'd like to hold workshops for seventh graders so that they can get excited about ordaining and saving money for this trip and ordaining the media outlets for hundreds of people to go to that year.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think you've reached the end. Thank you for the patience. That was a really long slideshow. I tried to make as short as I could.
I just want to give one more snapshot experience. When I came to speak with students here before, because we were concerned about enough students wanting to come. And we actually had to do several presentations to ease parent concerns and to get students excited. The things they were concerned about did not at all match what we just saw. They were concerned about my sleeping bag. There was one student said, I can't come because I don't sleep in a sleeping bag. I have to have a blanket. So, I talked with her in the hallway. When she got off the bus, she was still hesitant, nervous about this program. I saw her the day she came off of the canoe, the fifth day of the program, first week of Flo, glowing, jumping up and down, saying, this was so fantastic. I want to come again. Can we do a second trip this fall? So, it really was transformative. And that was just one example. I can tell you 10 more, please.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the board? Just want to thank you guys for coming again.
Yeah, I, it's a great program, you know, thank you, Lauren. I know the impact that it has on kids because I've been doing this program, and Woolwich has been doing this program for its kids. Not this sophisticated in terms of the presentation by far, but just so the BMS parents understand that Woolwich teachers got together, created the program just like this, volunteered all of their time, asked for no money from the district, and did a lot of these components for kids. I think over 12 years, this program has been going on here. So, I understand the impact of it. Chauki can do it at a different degree than we certainly did. I've worked at Chauki and it got an expertise that we didn't have as a volunteer group. But as an experience for this, the sixth grade teachers and other volunteers here at Woolwich have been doing this same kind of program. And so, I can hear the excitement in this from BMS because maybe that program didn't exist in the capacity in Bath. But I'm not sure how it fits in the legacy of how kids grow up in this system with that expectation of that sixth grade trip that we've been doing for so long, how Flo works with that. And how, because it was an additional part of our curriculum, we were very mindful, myself being one of the teachers who did this for many years, not asking any money from the parents, any money from the district. We had this part of fundraising that the kids did over their entire time here at Woolwich, so it wasn't an individual additional. We didn't have the component of having them be involved with the BMS students, and that's another great part of this. But I didn't realize how much we did until I saw this very sophisticated, beautiful presentation about what we did for the kids over all the years. And I ran the sea kayak part of it, so I understand that impact of being out in the water. It wasn't to the degree of being out for as long as Flo does. And I think it's a wonderful program, especially if BMS doesn't have something like this. And I'm so glad that so many BMS families got a chance to do it and this funding reached them. But for this much money and having so few Woolwich kids do it this year, the kids who did it this year didn't have their sixth grade trip because it was the only year that the weather made it, so we couldn't go. And we have in the past gone in bad weather and to the point where our campground was so, our camping site was so flooded out that we had to roll all of our equipment and all of our kids out of a campsite to a different campsite in a rowboat because of those are the kind of conditions that you endure when you do these kinds of experiences. We're not an expeditionary school, but we still have this program in the fiber of the school and the community that we are here for, which. So, I hope the program goes forward. If it's going to mostly serve BMS students, though, I wonder how it's financed by all the taxpayers of our district. If we take the amount of money it costs and it only serves a small portion of the students here at Woolwich. So, I had this concern before, we brought it up. And I think it's a wonderful program. I think that it can change kids' lives. I've seen it. I've stood next to a kid who'd never had these experiences. You know, I think it does, it makes an impact. Maybe at Woolwich, we don't have the, not talking, the process, but I hear a lot of BMS kids talking about, I've never had a chance to talk to this other person in my class before. We probably don't have that because most of our kids had some sort of relationship with each other. So, I think there's so many components that this serves what BMS needs. But I'd like in the future for the program not to have to be a budgetary cost. I'd like to be able to take this $15,000 out of our budget because we're going to have to meet some really hard budgetary needs coming forward. And I'd like it to be fully funded outside of the district. I'd like all of the staff I'd like all of staff members to have the experience with these students, but to volunteer their time. I'd like the equipment to come volunteer. I'd like almost all of it not to have to come within our budget because I know that's possible. We did that here for a long time. So, I think it's a great program, but going forward, I think it's really important to look elsewhere for that $15,000.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Anyone else from the board? No? Okay. Thank you, guys, for coming and presenting. I appreciate you taking the time. The only thing I would just like to add, and again, we're running way behind, I think it was a herculean task what you did, and I think, you know, fundamentally, coming up with the concept took a huge amount of effort, and finding the dollars to do it, and then organizing it and executing it. It's amazing what you guys were able to accomplish in a one-year period. I think the biggest thing for me at this point, to build upon that experience and to take advantage of that experiential learning, that place-based learning, is the two things that I would want to hear when it comes around budget time is I would want to hear support from the administrators from both schools, that they still give it a thumbs up and that we can execute that, and that, and I know you alluded to this, that we strengthen the curriculum so that it's, it really draws on what we're doing in the classroom, that there is that connection. So, we don't see it as time away from the classroom, it's just another environment to engage students, you know, as a lot of you folks said, perhaps in an environment where they're not so engaged in the classroom. But that, the experience is a big part of it, but there really needs to be a strong academic component to it, too. It's going to take a while for us to get there, and it sounds like you're on the right track. So, again, thank you very much, you know, Lawrence, Chauki, staff, students, parents who came. And, you know, we hope to continue to have this discussion for years to come. So, I need to move on through the agenda. I'm going to turn this over to Patrick.
One thing is, I would like to thank Lawrence. I mean, he took the lead on this, and anytime you do something different or make a change, you get pushed back, you get asked questions, and it wasn't, you know, it wasn't always smooth sailing. And so, thank you, Lawrence. And Barry Sturgeon. We invite our donors here tonight, and the only person that I believe was here or still is here is Barry Sturgeon. Barry, you need to stand up for a second, I don't want to embarrass you, but Barry is part of the Davenport Trust. And when I leave this district, I'm going to take my calculator out, and I'm going to add up how much money Davenport Trust had given to RSU One to help our students, help our families, and help our teachers. It's just amazing what they give to the school system every year, and we thank you for that. And thank you for this, making this happen as well.
Thank you. All right, folks, we do have an executive session towards the end of our agenda, so I need to move things a little quickly. Brian, I may table some of these items, but we do need to get to that by 7:45. So, we'll go on to committee reports. 8.1, West Bath Withdrawal Committee. Kyle, is there anything on the committee?
I'll be quick because I don't have a call point slideshow like Lawrence. So, first, I just want to thank everybody for working on it, especially on the issue of school choice. I think we got that figured out. And so, I had gotten word that, I think on the ATP, Commissioner had approved that agreement. I haven't seen it officially yet, but that's what I heard happened. So, so, final approval that happened. There'll be two upcoming meetings at least, one for, one for the holidays in December, and then one in January is the plan. That's something we updated on the website. That's pretty much the extent of what I have for right now.
Okay, any questions for Kyle on West Bath Withdrawal Committee? All right, next, item 9.0, Superintendent's Report. Patrick?
Yeah, I'll cut out some things because Tim already mentioned it at the beginning for the sake of time as well, but just to mention to you that the board supported putting alternative education in at Morse High School this past year, and I was invited to a presentation that was done last Friday. And we have 13 students already in alternative ed that may not fit the regular mold of sitting in the classroom, receiving, you know, typical education that we may have received. And they did research on, I guess I would say, any historian that they chose in the city of Bath, went out to the paternity library, went to the cemeteries, did tours of Bath, and they had to do their presentations last Friday. And I have to say that every single one of those students were, they were articulate, they were well behaved, nobody, I mean, everybody was focused in that room on their peers. They researched, they were passionate about, it was just, it was good to see, it was, it was very gratifying to see. I mean, we had parents come in, high school kids, they went to that room to listen to their students give their presentation, and you could see a sense of pride, and that's what we created this program for, for those students as well as other students at Morse. But it really was, the teacher did a really great job, and it's a wonderful program that we've created. Numerous students, I might go list all the students' names because, I mean, even if we had time, it would take forever, but a great opportunity for a lot of our students, elementary up to high school, that participated in District Three Band or Chorus, and students have received honors and also had the, just the honor of being part of that process. And then, just to thank you again for supporting the seventh-grade ecology school that we have at Ferry Beach, that you send seventh graders to, again, another wonderful time and a very beneficial educational experience for them. I'll leave you with a STEM article tonight that talks about STEM opportunities through VRCTC that you can take with you tonight. So, and then I'm going to give you a real brief update, I've given it to you by email, but I'll give you a brief update on the Morse building project under this report, is that we passed a request for proposals. We received six of them. We interviewed four. There were seven people, there's nine people on our building committee, but there's seven people that were able to make it to interviews. So, we interviewed them on November 7th, and it was pretty much a group consensus that we wanted to move forward with a firm called La Valley Brenn Singer down in Manchester, New Hampshire, also have an office in Charleston, Massachusetts. And we conducted site visits to two of their head schools. One was a brand-new project, and the other one was a renovation project. The brand-new was in Windon, New Hampshire, and the renovation was at Nashua South High School in Nashua, New Hampshire. We did a thorough reference check to many different tools that they've worked with, and everything has come back, you know, top-notch. So, we're very impressed with them, and we have an appointment on December 2nd with the Maine Department of Education and La Valley Brenn Singer to try to work out a tentative contract that will probably get us through in the next six months. So, before we sign the contract, obviously, hopefully, my hope is that the December 15th board meeting, I will bring that contract back to you for your approach and for your approval on. So, that's, that's what we are at this point right now. I don't know if you have any questions about that.
Any questions from the board on the current status of Morse High School? No? All right. Alan, is there something, you were on the committee, can you talk to us a little bit more about why this group was chosen, what it was about them? Can you take the mic, please?
I think by and by, their presentation just was so much better than the others. It, of the seven people there, six had it under one. So, you know, it was pretty much a unanimous choice as far as presentation was concerned. The background seemed to be very firm. Patrick stepped further into it, and obviously, it stood up. So, I think we selected it in real first-class outfit. We'll see what happens with the dollar figure when that comes in, but probably, no matter who we deal with, dealing with the state, the figures are going to come somewhere in here anyway.
And I was, to give you a little bit of background, I've been in the business for 37 years, 55 staff people, designed over $3 billion of renovation and new construction, not only to schools, but also athletic facilities, healthcare, corporate offices, civic projects, you know, that led to more than over 300 public school projects. So, they have the experience, and when we asked them, "Why? Why us? Why now?" We were reassured that our, you know, the resources would be dedicated to us, and their real focus is on high schools. And some of the other funds that we interviewed did some elementary schools, but not high schools slash tech centers that we were looking for. You know, I really stressed sustainability of projects and cost efficient, but they're also very creative, and that's what we're doing as well. Just to give you an idea, Sanford has a $93 million project, which is high school and vocational, and they're in the process of working on that. Wells High School is a renovation as well as new construction, they're working on that. Salem, New Hampshire, Windon, New Hampshire, Profile, New Hampshire, which is Bethlehem, and, you know, Nashua, to give you some examples, and then Colby College, UNH, and Boston Children's Hospital, those are just some things that they've done recently, to give you an idea.
Anything else from the board on that? Steve?
You know, last year at this time, we were, we were talking very much in hypotheticals where, you know, the RSU was on a list. We weren't sure how fast the list was progressing in terms of funding, and a year later, we found ourselves at the threshold of selecting a, an engineering firm to do a pre-evaluation for site selection and evaluation of our buildings and evaluation of our needs. So, I think it's, you know, we're kind of on the threshold, and I really look forward to working with the community on this, to get folks enthusiastic. I mean, you know, come on, we're within five or six years of having a new school in the RSU, and I think, I think that's exciting for the community, it's exciting for the kids who are in the district and who are going to be entering the district, and it's a good time, so it's good.
Okay. Anyone else? I would just echo what Steve said and my concerns. Again, it's always with process, and I think the board needs to be aware of this, is really two things. To kind of get what Steve was saying, to make sure that throughout this process that we're communicating with the public as much as possible, that the committee is not only communicating with the board, but is also communicating with the staff and the parents and members of the community about where we are in the process and how this thing is progressing. The second piece of that is really making sure that we have a good partner in whatever firm that we choose, and that ultimately, we're working together, or that we're driving the process, or they're guiding us in a way that we feel comfortable. So often, in a situation like this, it tends to be the tail that's wagging the dog, and you don't realize until halfway through it that you either overlooked something, or maybe you should have had more input, and I just want to make sure that we stay on top of this. I had hoped tonight to ask, and this was the opportunity for the board, to ask a lot of questions about this firm, a little bit under the gun, and we don't have that opportunity, and I don't, I want to make sure that it just doesn't get away from us, because this is a big deal to this community, so. We'll move on to financial report. Deborah?
Sure, sweet.
Good.
Um, as of the end of October, we spent 22.9%. And as I look at this report, I know when you folks are looking at it, you're like, "Wow, so what does that really mean?" So, I hope to next month put a little bit more on this report for comparison, and I was looking at, like, last year, at this point in time, we're 22.58. So, so far, we're running pretty much like we were last year, and no big surprises at this point, that's good to know.
Okay. Any questions for Deborah? All right. Again, because of time and because we do have this executive session, I'm going to ask, is there a motion to table old business?
So, moved.
Okay, moved by Kyle, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling old business until our next meeting, raise your hand. Okay, none opposed. Old business will be tabled. I'm looking for a motion for new business, to table new business. So, we'll go. Okay, moved by Kyle, seconded by Bill. Is there any further discussion on new business? Okay, we will table that until the next meeting. All those in favor of the motion, excuse me, raise your hand. Okay, new business is tabled until the next meeting. I am going to have to move past the public, our second public comment section. We will move item 13.0 to 16.5, and is there a motion to move into executive session to consult with legal counsel pursuant, do we have two? Do we have two executive sessions?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Dean, seconded by Kyle. We are now in executive session.